Good evening, everybody. The Tuesday, May 19th meeting of the Cordera Town Council will come to order. Rebecca, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casusa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That will bring us to open time for public comment. This is a time for members of the public to make comments on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public will be given three minutes each. Rebecca, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment?
Let me check for any raised hands. And I am not seeing any raised hands.
Oh. Okay.
If Roy Wolford has his hand raised, but I believe it's for the next item.
Right, we know he wants to speak on a consent calendar item. Any emailed public comments?
No emailed public comments.
All right, very well. Then seeing none, we will close public comment. There are no presentations, so that will bring us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have already been discussed and do not require further discussion. Are there any members of the council that would like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, are there any members of staff that would like to pull a consent calendar item?
We do need to pull consent calendar item 4D as we received, well, public comment on the item, but also we received revised banner artwork.
Okay, great. So I know members of the public wanted to pull 4D anyways. So I'll just go ahead and pull 4D and then let's turn it over to the public right now. Would any members of the public like to pull another consent calendar item apart from 4D, which I've just pulled? Or would any members of the public like to comment on any consent calendar items?
Okay, I will check for additional raised hands. But I also wanted to point out to the council and the public that I did upload the revised banner artwork under your handout section of the dashboard.
Thank you.
I am unmuting Roy Wolford.
Oh, hello, hello.
I know you submitted a public comment, but you also asked.
I wanted to speak, I wanted to speak at open public time, too, and I had the hand raised.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I think I have the hand under control, but it's still not under control.
No, it was indeed raised. We just knew, I thought you were waiting to speak on consent.
Anyways, Roy, we got you on, so please go ahead.
Okay, so this was for public comment. Last, or a week and a half ago, my wife and I went to a restaurant to pick up breakfast. Very nice restaurant, very nice owner. And we asked, how's the business and how are you doing? And the comment was, oh, the business is doing okay, but except on the days that I cry. Except on the days that I cry. I mean, we need to open up the businesses and the economy, do it smartly, and do it now. I've written the council, I've spoken at council meetings, I've written the Marin County Supervisors. They don't respond at all. And there's a law that was passed for emergency meetings or emergency situations, okay, for the state. And Gavin Newsom, on the March 4th, declared a state of emergency. The proclamation claimed expired on May 3rd. So there is no state of emergency in California. And I would hope that the elected officials in other areas comply with the law. And I'd be more than happy to send a copy of that law. It's government code Title II, Division 1, Chapter 7, Emergency Service Article 13, and so on and so forth. So we really need to get to work to get things opened up so that we're not destroying millions and millions of owners' lives and employees' lives that work for small businesses and even large companies. So that's the bottom line. I hope that the town council can do something to get at least Cordera Madera and maybe parts of Marin open up more and more. I see that the construction workers are opening it, are working at Amy's. Maybe they can get that completed before the end of the month and we can go get drive-in at Amy's. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Roy. And so I believe that was intended for open time for public comment because that was not related to an agenda item. Did you also want to speak on item 4D?
Yeah, on item 4D, I've had concerns about MCE for many, many years. And so I understand it's already been pulled, thank you, or removed. And the concerns are, initially, all PG&E electrical customers were unilaterally designated auto-enrolled by the Marin Board of Supervisors as customers of MCE. A PG&E customer had to opt out. The program should have been opt-in. And of course, their logo, this is MCE, to me, is a blatant untruth. They go, my community, my choice. Now, how many thousands of customers didn't have the time or the knowledge to opt out? Choice? For years, MCE maintained their customers were paying less than PG&E customers for energy. That was not true. That's why MCE now maintains the bullet point competitive and stable price rates with priceless environmental benefits. Okay, so that one needs to be discussed, the priceless environmental benefits. I've tried to get competitive pricing information in quotes between PG&E and MCE. I wasn't able to do so. The explanation was that they were prevented by state law from full disclosure. I mean, come on now. Let's have some open disclosure on pricing. MCE is still maintaining the fabrication that MCE customers are receiving light, that is, was 50% and now 60% renewable energy or deep green, 100% renewable energy, when in fact, all customers of MCE and PG&E receive the same electricity. Okay, so electrons are the same regardless of the source of electricity it is generated from. All electricity is delivered via the PG&E electrical distribution system. For example, if three adjoining properties use the same amount of electricity, and of course, they are connected to the PG&E electrical grid, one customer PG&E, one MCE light green, one MCE dark green, each is receiving the same electricity that is generated from all the electrical generating sources. So I've talked with numerous people who are MCE customers. They actually believe they are receiving at least 50% electrically generated or renewables, from renewable sources at their residence. And even more staggering, Deep Greens believe they are receiving 100% electrically generated only from renewable sources. Of course, they would need a completely closed system with no other electrical sources of generation other than solar and wind power to receive 100% renewable energy. And we, and we, and how much renewable energy is actually coming from neighbors who installed solar panels and not MCE contracted sources.
Roy, that's going to be your three minutes, thank you.
That was three minutes.
All right, thank you very much, Roy. Teresa, can we vote now that 4D has been publicly commented on? Can we vote on all of these items together or do we need to vote on 4D separately?
I would vote on 4D separately because it was pulled from the consent calendar. I need to just make sure there weren't any other public comments on any other consent calendar item or 4D.
Sounds good, thank you. Rebecca, is there any other public comment on any consent calendar items?
I am looking for raised hands and I see no hands raised. And I will check public comments at tcmail.org.
Okay.
And I'm seeing no additional questions sent.
Okay, let's do the balance of the consent calendar. First, I would entertain a motion to move items 4A through 4G with the exception of 4D.
So moved.
Second.
Great, Rebecca, vote, please.
Councilmember Casusa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you. And if there are no council questions on 4D, I would entertain a motion on 4D as well.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is that I'm sorry that Roy didn't gain any benefit from my half an hour conversation with him an hour ago on this whole topic because his comment was unchanged. The promotion that we are putting forward as a council and as a town is for a voluntary program to go to deep green, something that our Climate Action Committee is very much in favor of. And it's the easiest way to cause MCE to buy 100% renewable energy, backing up their supply of energy at whatever number of kilowatt hours any individual is getting. So I'm very pleased that we're actually showing off and being, putting up these banners to try to get more than the present 5% sign-in and opting up for deep green. Perhaps even some more sign-ups for MCE as the supplier and generator of energy as well because we only have about an 82, 83%, or maybe it's 85% opt-in ratio amongst meter owners in Cordera Madera. That could be increased, too.
Thank you, David. Would somebody like to?
I would, I would like to move the passage of 4D.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you, Bob, thank you, David. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Yes, before I take the vote, I know that I did receive a question from an attendee who said that she did not get into the meeting in time to ask a question during public comment and would there be an opportunity to return to public comment?
Yes, absolutely, we'll do that right after the consent calendar.
Thank you. Councilmember Casusa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. And I would like to reopen public comment. Rebecca, are there any public comments? This is, this is open time for public comment on items not on the agenda.
Yes, I will unmute Laura, Laura von Waldberg.
Oh, wow, we're muted. Oh, can I ask now?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Laura von Waldberg, 38 Lakeside Drive. I have Jack and Brody here also. I was at the chat today with the mayor Beckman and the town manager. And I asked this at the meeting, but since I didn't get the response I was hoping for, I wanted to also bring my question tonight. So from what I understand, Marin County has said that their parks and open space can be opened. But the town of Cordera Madera has chosen, chosen not to open the Ring Mountain parking lot. My question is, why not? And what is the plan to get the parking spaces open quickly? I feel that most of the town wants that resource as an option to go out and go for a hike, take their children, to explore the Miwak Kitchen and the Rock at the top of the hill. And we're really anxious to get that open. So I'd like the town to consider what their plan is to get on that as quickly as possible. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Laura. We cannot get into substantive discussions on items that are not on the agenda, but I will definitely direct staff to follow up with you. And also, you have my contact information and I'm happy to discuss this with you as well. Thank you for making that comment.
Yeah, or maybe we could get it on the agenda next time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to close public comment right now and move back to the regular agenda. There are no public hearings, which brings us to business items. Our first business item is 6A, that is the second reading and possible adoption of ordinance number 993, which pertains to accessory dwelling units or ADUs. The ordinance would, one, make ADUs converted from existing floor space and all junior accessory dwelling units subject to the existing ADU capacity limitations on Christmas Tree Hill. And two, provide an option for discretionary review to allow non-clear story windows in ADUs. And three, make non-substantive cleanup changes to Chapter 18.31. I need to recuse myself from this item as I have a business that sells prefab ADUs and presents a conflict of interest. My understanding is the vice mayor needs to recuse himself as well. David, is that correct?
It is with respect to Christmas Tree Hill. I have one general question that applies to the town overall and the process overall.
Okay, Teresa will advise on how to proceed there.
Councilmember Kunhardt has a conflict of interest with respect to the entire item. If there is a question about that, we can address it offline. But he does have a conflict of interest as to the entire item.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to recuse myself now, which for me entails turning off my camera and my microphone. And I will pass the metaphysical gavel to Councilman Ravazio.
And I will also do the same.
All righty, so long.
Okay, thank you, Eli, thank you, David. Business item 6A, which Eli just took us through. I'm going to go to staff for a report.
Good evening, council members. This evening, you will be conducting a special, a second reading and possibly adopting ordinance number 993 to amend Chapter 1818 and 1831 of the zoning ordinance. And I'm going to wait for Rebecca to pull up the PowerPoint presentation on this item.
Okay, the presentation is up and I am transferring over to you. Let me know if that works. Okay.
I'm not advancing the slides. Do you mind running it, Rebecca?
Yeah, no. Let me just try once more. Okay. All right, if it's, if it's not working, then I will advance the slides for you.
Okay, next slide, please. Ordinance number 993 would do three things. The first, it would make accessory dwelling units converted from existing floor space such as basements, garages, and accessory structures, and all junior accessory dwelling units subject to the existing ADU capacity limitations in the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. Second, it would provide an option for discretionary design review to allow non-clear story windows in ADUs. And third, it would make non-substantive cleanup changes and clarifications to Chapter 1831. And none of these changes or clarification change the meaning or intent of the previously adopted ordinance number 992. Next.
Whoops.
Sorry.
So I think I have to start over. Is that the right slide?
Yep. On January 21st, 2020, the town council adopted ordinance number 992. The town began, began the process of amending the existing ADU ordinance last year to make improvements to the existing ADU regulations and also to be consistent with new state ADU laws, which went into effect on January 1st, 2020. On February 3rd, 2020, the town submitted ordinance number 992 to the Department of Housing and Community Development for review. As required in the new state ADU laws, all jurisdictions must submit their AD ordinances to HCD to review within 60 days of the ordinance being adopted. HCD then reviews ordinances and they may submit comments back to the town if there are any aspects of the ordinance that are not consistent with state law. And staff did reach out to HCD recently to inquire if our ordinance had been reviewed and it has not yet been reviewed. On February 11th, 2020, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and adopted by a four-to-one vote, a resolution recommending that the town council amend Chapters 1818 and 1831. The Planning Commission recommended a modification to the draft version of the ordinance to conclude it, to include an option for discretionary design review to allow non-clear story windows. There is a current standard in ordinance 992 that requires the use of clear story windows if the ADU is located within 15 feet of a shared rear or side property line. And this option would allow for a non-clear story windows in those, in those situations with design review approval or with written approval from the adjacent property owner. And on March 2nd, 2020, the town council conducted a public hearing and introduced ordinance number 993. The second reading was originally scheduled for March 17th. However, that item was postponed due to the Marin County shelter in place. Next. This shows Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. The overlay district is shown in the red hatchmarks. And the town's ADU ordinance currently limits the number of ADUs in a substantial portion of the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. These limitations apply to new attached and new detached structures that create new floor area, but not to interior ADUs such as basement and also not to junior accessory dwelling units. The Christmas Tree Hill overlay district is comprised of 11 capacity districts and 25 ADUs are allowed throughout this entire area. And these numbers were established in the mid-'90s when the overlay district was approved. The town's ADU ordinance adopted in December 2016, as well as ordinance 992 recently adopted in January, exempts ADUs located within an existing structure and all junior accessory dwelling units from the capacity limit in the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. Since 2016, public safety concerns about fire risks and evacuation challenges within portions of Christmas Tree Hill have intensified because of recent wildfires in Northern California. In light of these concerns, the town council is considering further amendments to the recently adopted ADU ordinance to make all types of ADUs, including those converted from existing spaces and JADUs, subject to the existing ADU capacity limitations in the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. Next slide, please. And this map shows the existing 11 capacity districts in Christmas Tree Hill. The lower portion of Christmas Tree Hill is not included in the capacity districts. And these parcels are highlighted in yellow. And there are approximately 30 parcels that are located within Christmas Tree Hill, but which are outside of the capacity district. This table on the right shows the percentage of allowable ADUs for each of the 11 capacity districts and also the total number of allowable ADUs. As you can see, the majority of existing capacity districts are at max capacity. There are currently three districts that have remaining ADU capacity, which include Capacity District Number 1, located towards the bottom, Capacity District Number 3, located right here, and then Capacity District Number 11, located at the top of Christmas Tree Hill. And I would like to point out that these numbers are based on our current ADU restrictions. And so it does not include interior ADUs that have been approved since 2017. Next slide. And there are several options available to the town council this evening. The town council may adopt ordinance number 993 as presented to amend Chapters 1818 Special Purpose Overlay District and Chapter 1831 Accessory Dwelling Units. The council may amend ordinance number 993 and reintroduce the ordinance as amended. The council may direct staff to make changes to the proposed ordinance and bring back the ordinance for the council to consider reintroducing. The council may decide not to adopt ordinance number 993 and provide no direction to staff regarding further amendments. Or the council may decide to continue the item to the future date. And that concludes staff's presentation. And both myself and Adam Wolfe are available for any questions.
Martha, thank you very much for that presentation. Rebecca, we're going to get to public questions and comments in a minute. But first off, are there any council member questions for staff? Just questions only at this point? Okay, hearing none, then we're going to move to see if there's any public comment on this item. Can you hear me, Rebecca?
Yes, I am just checking. I see, I thought I saw the raised hand, where did it go?
I would just add, Rebecca, while you're doing that, since we're on public comment, there were obviously, I think, a couple of public comments that were also included as part of Martha's staff report, which I'm sure the council has looked at, but perhaps might be worth just mentioning again at this time. Not going through them, they're fairly lengthy, but, but I do want to make sure that the public is aware that those comments have been received.
And they're also worth three additional comments that were received after the agenda was published on Friday. And those are included in the handout section as well and are available.
Okay. I received, while I'm waiting to see if the hands that were raised are raised again. I did receive an email earlier to my town of Cordera Madera email. And that one is from Inga Morrison. My question for tonight, Corona 19 has shown us that population density is a huge hazard. Why do we want to increase the density in Cordera Madera? ADUs could become our hazard. I absolutely believe that if you have an ADU, the property must be owner occupied. What is to prevent many homes to have one ADU and one JADU included in the house plan and rent out the main house? We have now potentially increased the population at that address from one couple to six adults and two children, from one car to six plus cars, increased noise, increased school population, and no positive impact to the town at all. Thank you, Inga Morrison. Okay. And was I going to read the three emails that came in after publication of the packet? Oh, one was from Louise Brown, who currently has her hand raised. So I will unmute. Louise, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Did you want to make your public comment? Or did you want me to read the public comments you submitted?
I'm happy to make a comment. I've commented extensively, I, I'll try to be concise here.
Okay, I'm setting a timer for three minutes.
Okay, thanks. First, congratulations to the new council members and officers of the town council. And thank you to the council for appointing me to the Park and Rec Commission. I'm looking forward to serving in that capacity. And this is what I hope is my final impassioned plea to ask the council to put in place wise, sustainable, and thoughtful limits on density in areas where conditions like narrow streets and limited egress would severely affect the ability for residents to evacuate and emergency personnel and vehicles to respond in the event of wildfire. Ordinance 993 is not the only thing we should do to harden our community against the ever-increasing fire danger. But it is one thing we can do right now. And it is the same thing the city of Larkspur did just recently in passing their ordinance 1045, which is referenced in my public comments, recognizing that certain hillside areas are particularly vulnerable and therefore require limits to runaway development of new accessory dwelling units, be they ADUs or JADUs. Larkspur's ordinance specifically restricts new accessory dwelling units on Marina Vista and Sunrise Lane, which are both part of Christmas Tree Hill. Wildfires are a clear and present danger. CAL FIRE recently reported that from January to May 10th of this year, California had already had 1,130 wildfires, a 60% increase over the same period last year. Our community is vulnerable and we must put in place smart restrictions to avoid exacerbating already challenging conditions. Whether ADUs or JADUs, without restrictions, density will increase on Christmas Tree Hill. This is not a zero-sum game. This is not an exchange of adult children moving out and an elderly relative or tenant moving in. Current legislation would allow for every current lot to add up to two additional housing units. That means that where there is currently one household, up to three could occur. In the event of an emergency, that means a significant In the event of an emergency, that means a significant increase in the number of people attempting to escape when emergency vehicles and personnel are attempting to respond. And I would refer you to just three days ago, the gas leak that shut down from number, I believe, forty-one to one oh two summit for six hours. People were trapped. Please put residence safety at the forefront of your decision making. Please pass ordinance nine nine three as currently stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Is there any more public comment Rebecca?
Yes, I have two additional emails to read. Let me just start my timer again and I will read an email received from Lucinda Smith. She says, dear council members, although I have raised my concerns in person in at least two prior planning council and or town council meetings. Regarding ADUs and JADUs, I will again request that Chapman Park specifically Altaway, Alta Terrace. Lower Sausalito, Fairview, Medrono and related adjacent streets. Be identified for special consideration, RE limitations for ADUs and JADUs. Similar to those included in the overlay district for Christmas Tree Hill. The streets in our area are very narrow and winding and cars are often parked on one or both sides of a given street. It is a fact that residences and exiting existing ADUs in our area. Often have more cars than can be accommodated with off-street parking. The infrastructure was never built to accommodate these additional vehicles and or the additional residents resulting from ADUs. JADUs, while I realize that property owners have rights to modify their existing structures. Or to add to new ones, what about the safety of the residents already owning property in the area and the rights to safe passage under emergency conditions? It is a difficult path for the town to take, but the town has already imposed restrictions in issuing building permits. And is therefore set a precedence for limiting certain aspects when issuing new building permits. Thank you for your possible special consideration for ADU and JADU permits for the Chapman Park hillside areas. Respectfully, Lucinda Smith. And we have one final email received from Michael Harlock. Starting my timer. To the Corder Madara Town Council, passage of this latest amendment to Corder Madara's ADU regulations as proposed reinstating arbitrary ADU quotas from the twenty-five. Year old Christmas Tree Hill overlay district is a big step backward for housing diversity in Corder Madara. As the town attorney opined at the last hearing, it is likely that the state. HCD will view this restriction to be contrary to the intent of current state ADU policy. The minimal three-member majority who approved the current amendment did so fully aware of this likely outcome. In this regard, I think notifications of the council's intent to adopt the amended ordinance should clearly indicate that its effect. Is subject to HCD's approval. This is bureaucracy working unique hardship on owners who may desperately need rental income during the COVID crisis. Mention was made at the last hearing that the fire marshal stated additional units on the hill could worsen fire conditions. This statement ignores the vigorous work to remove hazardous vegetation together with coordinated neighborhood response teams. Far more impactful than the few additional apartment units with compliant parking that might be allowed. Is the trend to tear down old one and two bedroom homes on Christmas Tree Hill and replace them with four or five bedroom, four thousand square foot houses. Adding much more to traffic levels which are rarely congested anyways unless construction is in progress. It should finally be noted that one, this ordinance represents spot zoning that does not apply to similar hillside neighborhoods in town. And two, it will make meeting Corder Madara's coming art arena allocation. That much more difficult to achieve, please stop this backwards looking process before it is too late. Please submitted, Michael Harlock. And then I have. One more email from. From David Kuhnhardt. Who says, I am writing on behalf of my wife and myself, residents of Christmas Tree Hill since nineteen ninety-six. And engaged with the Hill Dwellers Association and the Christmas Tree Hill NRG with many, many. Hours of volunteer support. I am communicating with the council as an individual family, not as a council member or representing any other person. There are several ways the town has regulated growth on Christmas Tree Hill. And can continue to do so. The town has successfully required two dozen homes that were to be renovated to create a minimum of two off-street parking spaces each, for example. In our case, we were required to create four such spaces, see picture attached. It is also possible to prohibit new water and sewer connections and prohibit new structures to be built outside of the existing homes. The present ordinance takes a path that is at the far end of the spectrum of possible actions prohibiting any internal space in existing structures to be used separately by a second household. Even if there's a pre-egress, more than sufficient parking and no new water or sewer hookup. In short, this tool is a blunt instrument. That removes individual property rights from all of us, no matter where we may live on Christmas Tree Hill or what conditions prevail. This tool is too big. Too blunt, too restrictive and should be abandoned in favor of more precise planning tools, please, thank you. David and Susan Kuhn.
Thank you. David, Rebecca, is there anything else?
I don't believe so.
Okay, then we're going to close. Okay, sorry.
Let me just check one more time since there were hands raised that I called on originally that I didn't know were. And I am not seeing any additional public comments.
Okay, then we will close public comment and we will bring it back to the council. For further questions, discussion and a vote. First off, are there any other questions from council for staff on this?
Yeah, this is Fred, I just have one, just for clarification purposes. If we pass this and it goes to HCD correct, or do they already have it? And they're reviewing it. So if we pass it and they come back to us saying they want changes or there's something that they don't like, it doesn't comply with state law. Are we then given the opportunity to amend it? And are there any other ramifications by going that route?
We are given the opportunity to amend our ordinance if we receive comments from HCD. This ordinance nine nine three has not been provided to HCD at this time. We sent the prior ordinance nine nine two, which was adopted in January and have not received any comments on that ordinance. But there is a process in place where HCD responds and provides comments to jurisdiction. And then the jurisdiction can confer with HCD and discuss comments. And then either amend the ordinance to address comments that they raise. Or move forward with the ordinance that was previously adopted and stating the reasons why we believe it is consistent with state law.
Okay, and it's my understanding that HCD is behind, I guess, reviewing ordinances, I guess, just with the current environment. So we could pass this tonight and may not hear back for a period of time?
Correct, I mean, our last, our prior ordinance was submitted about three months ago and we have not yet heard back on that ordinance. So they are being inundated with ordinances to review and then a lot of questions. So the timeline could be several months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. I have one question for staff. We have received comments in the past that JADUs actually don't increase density. But I, my children or adults now have moved out of the house, I've got a spare bedroom. With outdoor access and a bathroom, I could wall that off. And we could rent, turn that into a JADU, somebody would move in, they would have a car. Wouldn't that be an increase in density in the neighborhood if I did that?
If you created a JADU and you rented it out, it would be an increase. And to kind of clarify the difference between a JADU and an ADU. Is a JADU is limited to a maximum size of five hundred square feet. And it must be converted from an existing bedroom in the residence. And it needs to have a separate access, so you theoretically could rent the JADU out to. An individual or a couple and it would be an increase in the number of people on that property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, if not, then we're going to bring it back for comments, discussion and a possible vote. And if I may, this is the third time we've discussed this and there have been other council members, you guys are both new, I've been in the other meetings. Do you mind if I give my comments first and kind of bring everybody up to speed on what happened, is that okay with you, Fred and Charles?
Yeah, I think it'd be appreciated since you have the background, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So this was done as a directional meeting first and then there was a first reading and both items were discussed. With the public and in both cases, the direction was three oh to move ahead with this. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of background of some of the comments I made, so I apologize for giving all these comments again, but. I think it's important, so I will just briefly go through these. First off, from the zoning code, which was actually written in nineteen ninety-three with help from the Christmas Tree Hill community, this is what it said in nineteen ninety-three. The roads on Christmas Tree Hill are steep, narrow and winding. There are many small developed lots with severely limited off-street parking. Christmas Tree Hill is heavily vegetated and developed with numerous older wooden structures. Resulting in high fuel loading and severe fire hazard. It's really difficult to get around up there and at this time Rebecca, I had asked you to pull together a photograph or put a photograph up. If you have time, if you can put that up. But as I think all the council knows, there was a. Fire on Christmas Tree, not a fire, there was a gas leak on Christmas Tree Hill this week. This is at seventy-four summit. That's a fire truck parked on seventy-four summit. Look how much space it takes up on the road, look at the cars and trucks backed up behind it. Summit goes up into the four hundreds. This is really low down, this is why density on Christmas Tree Hill is an issue. No cars can get by that. If there's a fire and fire trucks are trying to get up the hill to put the fire out and people are trying to get out in cars, there's going to be a huge problem. So that's the first point I wanted to make. It has not gotten any better since this was done in nineteen ninety-three. If anything, climate change has made the fire situation much worse in California. So that's point number one. Number two, Christmas Tree Hill is already a major fire issue for the town. Last year, the town spent approximately seven hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on vegetation removal on the hill. Lifting canopies and clearing paths and also for the chipper program to try to improve safety up there. Next, as many of you know, I work in real estate. Fire insurance is already an issue on Christmas Tree Hill for residents. I recently got a estimate for a house up there below summit, below summit, an eleven hundred square foot house. And fire insurance is going to be twenty-seven hundred dollars a year. Which is a lot. I've also been told by a State Farm rep that State Farm wants out of all policies in California, the wildland urban interface. Fortunately, the state is banning cancellations for now, but this can affect residents up there soon. And they are now, if you apply for fire insurance. The fire insurance company send a rep out to the house and they take a tape measure and they measure the width of the road. And the width of the parking spaces to make sure that fire trucks can pass, they're taking it really seriously. If insurance companies think the fire danger up there is great, we should think the fire danger up there is great also. Next, parking is an issue up there. I walk on Christmas Tree Hill a couple of times a week. And there are twenty-one spaces from Lower Summit Fire Road to the top of Hill Path, which is part of the walk. And because this has been important, I've started counting. And almost every day that I go up there, all twenty-one of those spaces are already filled and there are usually a couple of cars parked illegally. This ordinance does not require parking spaces, right? You can put in, if this, if, I mean, this ordinance would prohibit that, if we did not do this, you'd be able to put an ADU in without putting a parking space in. And that's going to make what's already a bad situation worse and potentially force current residents to park elsewhere, potentially at the bottom of the hill. Finally, the issue with the state and this law. Other towns are facing the same problem and they're going to be taking this on just like we're talking about doing tonight. Larkspur's already done it, other towns are, I've already contacted Mark Levine's office and talked about potentially working together with. Other towns to make sure we can get this through the state and make sure this passes. But other, other towns are going to have the same problem and the state does not want to increase the danger of fire deaths. And we don't want to increase density up there any more than it already is. And then just in summation. Our primary job as a council member is to protect the public health and safety. And I think it is absolutely essential that we pass this tonight to protect public health and safety because we have. To keep density low in what is already the most dangerous fire area in town. We're talking only, by the way. I believe this is about six percent of the households in the town. That means that we are allowing this ADU law in ninety-four percent of the households. So while, yes, it might be difficult, I think most of the residents would really appreciate the fact. If we were to go ahead and pass this, so I am, in case you couldn't tell, strongly in favor of this and would recommend passage. Thank you very much. Any other comments from council?
I just, this is Fred, I appreciate your comments, Bob, and I totally agree with you on the safety issue. I lived up on Christmas Tree Hill, I think for about twelve or thirteen years in the eighties and early nineties. And then recently I've been actually walking up to the top of summit. I forgot how steep it was going up in some points. But I recognize and I know the safety factors up there, again, from living up there and taking walks up there. So I agree with your, your comments on the safety issue, which should be the number one factor.
Thank you. Charles, do you have any?
Yeah, so I think this is the first time it's come in front of me on the council. But Theresa, can I speak to how I reviewed it while I was on the Planning Commission?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so I was a dissenting vote on the Planning Commission. And I think part of that is because as an advisory board, we're supposed to thoroughly vet and give recommendations of the totality of it. To the point that it's approvable for a town council and at the time. I had some more questions and wanted to see more evolution before we put it in front of the council, so I dissented at that time. Currently, in its current form, eighteen point three one point zero five zero, the procedures for interior ADUs and JADUs. Alleviates what my concerns were about interior spaces and the ability for people to address them. And it does not restrict them, it nearly, it only allows certain processes of the conversion of that space. Which is the more lenient and less reviewable JADU process, right? And so because of that. Language, I can now see that people still have a pathway to explore that. And whether that's appropriate in that area. I do agree with you on the council, the considerations are much greater than just the planning and real estate rights and zoning and. Fire safety is critical and as a councilman, I don't feel comfortable. Going against the advisement of many of the town officials and then also. What I see as the majority of the residents and what they would like up there. And so as a council member, I can actually kind of make the findings, you know, I can really see and approve this in the second reading, this go around, so. Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to share is kind of my background and how that's evolved.
Charles, thank you, are there any other comments from council members? If not, I'll, is there a motion?
This is Fred, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number nine nine three to amend chapters eighteen point eighteen. Special purpose overlay and eighteen point thirty-one accessory dwelling units.
I'll second it.
Rebecca, vote?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
And Mayor Beckman is refused. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I, at this point, I guess I turn the meeting back over to Mayor Beckman.
Great, and I'm here on audio, we're going to need to free up a webcam spot, here we go, okay, great.
You can take my spot.
Awesome, and we'll wait for the vice mayor.
I am unmuted.
All right, we'll just wait until we, there we go, okay, awesome. Thank you, everyone, thanks, Bob. So that brings us to item six B, which is consideration and possible action to approve the amended budget increase of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. For the Skunk Hollow Park improvements, which brings the total for that project to three hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and to approve plans and specifications. To authorize the Public Works Director to advertise for bids on that project. Staff, is there a report?
Hey RJ, can you let up on the webcam?
Sure. All right, good evening, Mayor and council members, here to discuss the Skunk Hollow. Park improvement, this is a project that's been in development for several years and has. Spent some time going to Park and Rec Commission and also has worked with numerous vendors that supply playground equipment. And wanted to provide a brief update about kind of the evolution of costs and then just a brief explanation of the concept of the project. Rebecca, are you going to control for me or shall I, or do I have access to this? Rebecca, are you going to control for me or shall I, or do I have access to this?
I'm going to try it one more time. Like I said, it did work.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, and it's only a few slides, so it's okay if you would like to walk us through. Next slide, thanks. So initially, just wanted to recap some of the discussions with the community and some of the, you know, noticing that's gone along with this project. This went to Parks and Rec Commission in February of nineteen, February of twenty, and then recently here in May. We sent out mailers to the very nearby neighborhood and also an email blast to interested citizens. And so we've compiled the various types of feedback into what we think is a great project. And granted, the budget has increased, wanted to walk you through kind of some of the amenities that the public will receive with that increase in funds. And then, as mentioned prior, there's three playground suppliers and they all had kind of their own versions of some of the goals of the, of the project, just with some slight variances in kind of the overall style and functionality. And the one that we're presenting today is by Miracle Place System. Next slide. So the next two slides are going to just walk you through some of the items that did lead to this increasing cost. You can see the expanded footprint for the three-bay swing set. The current playground does end shortly in between those, the, the swing set and the structure that you see right now. In addition, these improvements do trigger a parking spot for disabled folks. And so that is a, you know, cost as well that is not currently in the, in the vicinity of that project. Next slide. So a couple other items. So keeping with, you know, kind of the standard that many have felt with town park and the playground there and also around Marin, the rubber play surface really has its, you know, various benefits. It's more accessible, it's porous, and it's, it's also very safe because of the, you know, softness and the ability to, if someone does fall, they can often recover much easier than other surfaces. That is considered a premium cost compared to things like mulch and sand and other things. We do have also this, what we're calling sand area with water feature. It has kind of this hand pump that, you know, if you have children, could see them having a lot of fun pulling that up and down, squirting water down, and then that kind of dribbles into the sand area and allows them to then build sand castles and other mud features. And then the other one here is this climbing area that was kind of a premium rock climbing feature that would be one of the aspects of the play structure. Next slide. So in summary, those, that's the, the reason for the increase in costs. Again, these were generated from many conversations with the public and the residents and also the Parks and Rec Commission. And we think it's a great project. And so we are, you know, considering possible action to approve this amended increase in budget and approve plans and specs and allow myself to advertise for Skunk Hollow Park Improvements Project. Any questions?
Thanks, RJ. And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can I add a couple of comments? RJ touched on it. I just, again, you know, I take responsibility originally when we talked, when I became manager in twenty sixteen, one of the most important park projects that I heard from citizens and the Planning Commission and staff was Skunk Hollow Park. And so as we started to prepare for such a project, you know, it's really hard to budget for some, it's not like an engineer's estimate on a project. You know, you don't really know exactly where, where the project's going to take you. And so I placed about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar placeholder for this project for council to approve in a budget to begin the process of a discussion of what, what this project would look like. You know, I came with that estimate based on what was currently there and replacing it. But as RJ touched on, as you go through the, the community process, and whenever you touch something that is decades old, ADA comes into play. And that was a big deal. And I think, again, one of the major points of the community at the neighborhood, they really wanted to see rubberized, you know, go away from the bark and, and, and things like that. So staff, you know, went through the public process, heard what was given to us, and we came up with this project. I support it. As you'll see in the, the staff report, this is going to be one hundred percent covered by Measure A funds. Those are our park funds. We've been able to stack a few fiscal years together to come up with a three hundred thousand plus kind of pot of money. I think currently, at the end of the fiscal year, we'll have about three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in that fund. And so that is, that's an appropriate use of that fund. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions and hopefully we gave you enough background on how we got to this point.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Thanks, RJ. Are there questions from council members right now? Charles?
So RJ, I just wanted to, you know, we're moving towards having a, you know, a more carbon-oriented kind of discussion in the town. And you mentioned that the rubber is a premium cost. But to me, is that a first-time cost, right? Which is more of a developer thinking versus lifecycle analysis and facility management standpoint, which we as a town are the final owners also, and therefore should really consider what the overall cost of the rubber, which probably has a lifetime expectancy of what, twenty, thirty years? You know, and is easily cleanable versus, you know, where the bark is continually renewed each year and has a lot of other considerations about it as far as health and safety, right? So I just, I just wanted to clarify whether that's what you meant by premium and, and the cost, right? Because it would be nice moving forward if we make decisions about, hey, we're doing this and it's going to cost this much upfront to understand the lifecycle cost of doing something which seems ultimately cheaper in the budget initially, right? That's my only comment because I think that way it makes a lot, it makes it a lot easier for me to say, this isn't really a budget increase, it's a budget decrease, especially since we're trying to manage the budgets farther out, you know, and, and spread it out. So I guess if you could clarify what you meant by that and if that thinking was embedded in that or if it, like, you know, maybe touch on it, maybe it's too pointed of a question right now for you to address at the broader level, but yeah.
No, I, I think all the things you pointed on are, you know, I believe them to be true and accurate. And also, you know, many of these rubber products are recycling tires. And so there's a sustainability feature here, too. And so I would, I would even, you can even argue that premium takes the cost out of it and considers everything without the cost. It just also does so happen to be more expensive. So I think you're really getting the best of a lot of worlds in that it's more accessible, it's lower maintenance, it's more sustainable, you know, and, and then it's permeable, which is another part of the sustainability factor in that.
Safety-wise, it's less liability for the town, right? Because we know it's the safest materials to provide for the children and their health, right?
Absolutely. Yeah. And they, they have, you know, the thickness down to a science. It's going to be a certified surface and all of those things that, yeah.
I design playgrounds for SFO, so I'm biased.
Thanks, Charles. Good question. Other questions from council members?
This is Fred. I don't have a question, but I will have some comments when we get to that.
Okay, we'll come back to that after a public comment. Any other questions from council members right now? I'll just ask a quick clarifying question. I just wanted to confirm. My understanding is that because these are coming, this is being funded by Measure A funds. Those are park funds. And so this is not money that could be used for like other, you know, general fund purposes. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, strictly, you know, parks and recs projects.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to go to public comment. Rebecca, is there any public comment on this item?
While I'm waiting to see if there are any raised hands, I will check for emailed public comment first.
Thank you.
And I see no emailed public comments. And there are no hands raised.
Okay, great. Thanks. And we will bring it back. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for council member comments.
Yeah, this is Fred.
Yeah, Fred.
Yeah. First of all, I just want to thank RJ and staff. I think they did a really good job on the project so far as far as the conceptual design. I give you guys a lot of credit because you really listened to what the public wanted, that neighborhood especially. And you loaded it up, I want to say, with a lot of amenities that they were looking for. So that I really appreciate. Couple of other things. One thing is, the project's part of minor thing, maybe you can refresh the sign that's there a little bit. It may be a little bit outdated for what we're putting in there. That looks a little bit newer. When you get closer to the actual construction, if maybe you can just notify the immediate neighbors, I think there's four or five houses directly across the street and there's one that lives right next door to that park. So if you just give them some advanced notice so that they're aware that construction's coming up so they can plan accordingly. And then just the last thing, I sat in on the public or on the Park and Rec Commission meeting last night for which this project went before them also. At one point in time, it came up about restrooms and maybe in the future. Again, I think it was just a high-level discussion. But I just want to remind staff, I think the issue of restrooms came up in Skunk Hollow three or four years ago. And at that time, I know none of the neighbors wanted restrooms there, including porta-potties. And I think it actually went to town council. Bob maybe may remember. And I think at that time, town council was definitely against it. So I just want to make sure staff is aware of what happened again, a number of years ago with restrooms, so it doesn't repeat itself again. Thanks. And again, thanks for their, all the great work.
Good points, Fred. Thank you. Are there other comments from council members? Charles?
So the water feature is one that I wanted to comment on. You know, I've seen other parks in the region that utilize that and it is a ongoing maintenance issue. And for a lot of the parks, they've actually been shut down over time. I think it's great. I'm, I guess I noticed because it's a disappointment when my kids couldn't utilize that facility. My only other concern with it is, you know, and when water scarcity is also an issue that we're faced with, you know, I think it's an appropriate use of water. I think it's a great use of water. But then the lifecycle of that water, if there, if it's used for, you know, can be contained and then used for watering or, you know, just kind of thinking of the lifecycle of that water if it, or if it's such a trickle that it's an inconsequential amount, just addressing that. Because it is, it is a concern. I've heard voiced about those types of systems. So those are just my comments and things that I think we could think about to improve it. But it is that I would like to see a maintenance program with that that continually, if we're going to pay to install it, that we, we have, we ensure that it's, it's functional and that we're not just going to shut it off. Because that is more disappointing than anything to see that available but not running. So.
All right. Thank you, Charles. Any other council member comments? Bob?
Yeah, just quickly, I think it's a great project. It's a great improvement. We have been, I think we've been addressing this, as you heard, for a number of years. I'm thrilled that we're finally getting to the point of getting it done. And I think we should vote to approve this tonight.
Yeah, I, I will say that Skunk Hollow has not changed much since I was a kid playing on it. So that's a park that definitely could use some love. And I think we've been hearing that pretty consistently from the residents who live nearby for years now. And I'm glad to see that it's happening. And I'm even more glad to see that it's being paid for with Measure A funds that are specifically dedicated to park projects. So it's not like this is coming at the expense of anything else. David, did you want to say something? You're muted.
I'm still, I'm, am I unmuted now? Very, very quickly, I'm agreeing, in agreement with my colleagues on everything that's been said. And I want to thank Todd Cusmano for falling on his own sword on the issue of the doubling of the cost. Thank you, Todd.
All right. Well, sounds like we're all in agreement then. I will entertain a motion to approve the amended budget for this project and to authorize the Public Works Director to advertise for bids for the Skunk Hollow Park Improvements. That's project number twenty oh oh three.
So moved.
Great. There's a second? Fantastic. Rebecca, vote please.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Great. That brings us to item six C, which is consideration and possible approval of the use of two hundred thousand dollars from the Measure B and Measure F Sales Tax Fund for the Small Business COVID-nineteen Disaster Relief Fund. Todd, I believe there's a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is, this should not be new to anyone on the council. This has been a discussion over the last two meetings. Your town managers worked closely with the mayor to really develop this program to offer relief similar to aid that was rendered by the County of Marin, Nevada, San Rafael, and Mill Valley. So we really looked at those programs and tried to develop our own specific to our situation. I won't read the background of the staff report as it should look familiar to you. It's something that we've, we provided you over the COVID-nineteen response and, and issues over the last few meetings and various staff reports. But again, this is an unprecedented time for us. You know, as you know, you know, our small business community has always been the backbone of the Marin economy and it's a strong contributor to the high quality of life that we not only share within the county, but within the town of Cordera. So when COVID-nineteen swept through the state and our area, many of our important small businesses took a huge economic impact and were the, took a, took the brunt of the shelter-in-place mandate. And so many of our businesses and their employees have been impacted in unprecedented ways. And quick action was needed. And as we've talked about, there's both been state and federal packages, both in loans and, and grants to support our small businesses. But we felt it necessary to continue to help that, help bridge that gap. And even though this is a thousand-dollar grant to small businesses, you know, anything helps to help them bridge and hang on to when we can start to slowly reopen and, and get that financial support they need at, at really the state and federal level. And so what we did is we, the town of Cordera initiated a Small Business COVID-nineteen Disaster Relief Fund. And again, it was, it was put in place and created to help maintain a cash flow of financial solvency during the unprecedented times. And really, again, to help, the goal of it was to help bridge the gap to when larger funding grants and loans could be established through various state and federal stimulus packages. And so again, on, on page two of your report and the discussion, we outline what the relief fund and application process look like. We are looking, again, we are kind of following the model within the county. We didn't want to reinvent the wheel. But we are also looking specific to our small businesses of trying to define what they look like. And so on page two, you can see the four criteria that we use. And we also have an attached application. I believe that's attachment two of this report. But we were looking for someone that operated within Cordera, had a current town business license. And they had a business license for the last calendar year. That they had no more than twenty-six full-time employees. Again, we're looking for small business owners. And then we're also looking for, that they didn't have an independent fundraising effort currently established, which includes GoFundMe. And so under the leadership of the mayor, and then we talked about this before, Supervisor Redoni and Julie Kritzberger, our Executive Director of our Chamber of Commerce for Cordera, we really tried to put together a program of, of funding. And so the Chamber of Commerce donated twenty-five thousand dollars. That funding normally came, was, was earmarked for the Fourth of July parade. And so since we don't have a Fourth of July parade this year, unfortunately, Julie and the board agreed to divert those funds to this program. We were able to get Supervisor Redoni and the county to agree to support us a ten thousand dollars of assistance. They based that ten thousand dollars on population. As you can imagine, all the cities and towns are requesting similar funding. And so originally, we were looking at about thirty thousand dollars. But at the end of the day, the county gave us ten thousand dollars, which we appreciate very much. And so the difference is funded by the town of Cordera. And so I'll, I'll go through that in a second. But that difference for this conversation is seventy-eight thousand dollars. And so now staff had to basically develop the plan, as you can see in the attachment two and attachment one as well of what the criteria was. And so Lorena Barrera, she's our administrative analyst, she headed the Lorena Barrera, she's our administrative analyst, she headed this program with the help of Rebecca Vaughn, Daria Carrillo, Lena Azavado, Julie Kritzberger. And so they really put their heads together and they, they built this program. Before the five of them and Lorena oversaw this. And so what they wanted to do, we have about 511 businesses in town. And so they either emailed, if you had an email, they called you if you had a phone number. And if they didn't have either one, we mailed you notice. And so we contacted via email, mail, or actually phone call. With the help of, again, those five employees and Julie, as well as our Park and Rec staff. We contacted every business owner to let them know of this program because we thought it was really important. And so those noticing went out. We opened up the application process and closed it, I believe, within 10 days. After the notices went out. And you can see on page three, on the chart that Lorena put together. We received 120 applications. We actually approved 113. The seven that we didn't approve, they didn't have businesses in the town, or their business, business license was expired. Or they no longer had a business in town. And so it really took an extreme circumstance for us not to provide assistance to someone. We were, our goal was if you submit an application, we're going to support you if you come close to meeting this criteria. Lorena, you can see the, the business type. Of support that we provided on this first round of 113 accepted applications. Again, each one of these are a thousand dollar grant. And I think it's also important to point out what the public purpose is. And, and the mayor has done a really good job. And I'll let him touch on that and use it in his own words. But I think he really explains it well and succinctly, much better than I. But in this report, I want to read it. Lorena touched on it in this report. It's again, on the bottom of page three. So one important thing to note is approximately 90% of the revenues generated from local sales tax are paid by visitors and even online shoppers. If the town is unable to help businesses stay open, the community will lose the opportunity to increase sales tax funds. Which are actually leveraged by these regional shoppers for the benefit of local property owners, business owners and visitors. Who enjoy the town's roadways, open spaces, and our amenities. Giving a helping hand to our local businesses means that more jobs stay in Corder Madera and Corder Madera residents contribute. To these local businesses without having to go elsewhere. Therefore, this fund should not be seen as a benefit only to businesses, business owners. But a benefit to our entire community. And staff believes that. And that's our justification for building this fund and for asking for your authorization. Something I want to clarify on the fiscal impact. So for this first round of, of grants. The, the ask of the council is to authorize the $78,000 expenditure. That's the difference between us, the chamber, and the county. For the $113,000 grant. Staff believes that this, this process has been really successful and I think helpful from the business owners that have, that have responded to us. That their appreciation in providing their own personal stories. It's been really touching and, and I think there's more we can do. What I heard from the mayor and council members over the last few meetings. Was, you know, understanding our budget situation now at the town and really urging staff. To do as much as we possibly can for the business community. And in the next council meeting, you'll hear for what we can do for our low-income residents that are in need as well. What, what can we do? And staff believes that we can do this, the $78,000 ask for this first round. But it's, we're also asking for possibly a second round. And so the, the ask in this report is 200,000. $78,000 now and to ask for a second round of, of grants to the business community. And to open it back up and do this process one more time to see if we can help other small business owners. And so that, that, that is how we got to the ask of 200,000. And with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Todd. Are there questions from council members? There's no questions from council members, we will open it up for public comment.
Okay. I'm checking to see if any hands are raised.
That's where we're waiting for that. Mr. Mayor, again, I just want to, I just want to give props to my staff. I think, you know, putting anything together on the fly with what is happening right now. Is a, is a big ask. And Lorena, you know, again, she's part of our admin team. She really took the lead on this. And this is her work. And so kudos to her for putting this together so quickly and thoroughly. So thanks, Lorena.
Could not agree more. She and you guys all did a fantastic job. And especially, I mean, this, this breakdown of the business types that have received. Aid under this program is so helpful to us. That gives us really useful insight. So, and we didn't even ask for that. You, I mean, she just knew to do it. So thank you.
Okay. I am not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay. Any emails?
No emails were received.
All right. Then we will bring it back to the council for council comments. Bob?
Yeah, just one. I think this is terrific. We are more dependent on sales tax revenue than any town in Marin County and just about any town in the state. So even though we're having a difficult time, taking care of the business community is tremendously important. I think this is a terrific program. I think it is incredible that staff was able to contact that many businesses. I mean, that's just, this is just incredibly well thought out. And I think it is a really, really important thing that we move forward with this. I think this is a great idea. We're having tough economic times, but these guys are having tough economic times. And they're the ones that help us. So I think we should absolutely do this. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. David?
I agree. I think it's a really good sign of a partnership. Going to be even more necessary going forward. I actually think this amount of money for some of the businesses, I think of. My dentist, who hasn't had a single client for two months. Is potentially a very good symbol and not necessarily a source of, of recovery. But it's a very good symbol, a really great effort by our staff too. I agree.
Thank you, Fred.
Yeah, again, I'll echo the other comments. I mean, it's a great program. If I may, I do, I have a question. Todd, when do you expect round two to begin or roll that out?
With your authorization tonight immediately.
Okay. And then one, I'm sorry, Eli, one other question. For transparency purposes. Would it be worth, is there any consideration actually list on our website somewhere, the businesses that have received the money?
Yeah, it's all public record. The applications have to be kept as a public record. But yeah, let me talk to staff. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. But I'll coordinate with Teresa and, and Rebecca, and we can absolutely do that.
Okay. One thing, you just said the applications are public record. So anybody can review them?
Correct. We would take, I think, if there's any personal information, obviously, we would redact that. But yeah, that, that is a public record.
Yeah, no, that's why I was getting at, because yeah, if you were going to redact the non-public information, thanks. Again, great job.
Thanks, Fred. Charles?
So this is more a general comment for town staff and, and for the council to hear us. I, I also agree. It's great that we're able to do this. And, you know, I, I kind of think of it as government not being a fair weather friend, right? Like, we really do rely on these. They're, they're essential to the functioning of our town. And they need us more than anything else right now because they're being adversely affected in a way that we're not by just staying at home, right? So it's great that we can do that. I, I like that we can do a lot above and beyond, you know, means that come from outside the town to encourage that. And I guess I also think of it as an investment. So to me, it's not just a stopgap to help these companies or businesses. But as a town, I feel like it's a business-friendly approach that shows why businesses in the future might want to consider being here. Is that, you know, we are business. It's, it's like being business-friendly when everybody's doing great and, and it's easy, you know, trying to lure them in to benefit the community is one thing. But once you've got them in, how you treat them in the downturn, I think is much more critical and important for the long-term decision-making about why people are here. And I think that's what we're really proving. And that's why we should strengthen and do everything within our resolve to help them. Because coming out of it, not only will retaining them keep us strong, but I think we'll grow. So.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, you guys said it all. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think this is like one of the best imaginable uses of our money at this time. You know, I think, as Charles said, this is not just relief for our residents. This is an investment in the businesses that pay for the services that all of us benefit from. So I think this is a really fantastic use of our funds for multiple reasons. And I'm thrilled to support it. Rebecca, is this an item that we need to vote on, or is this just direction to staff?
I believe it's an item to vote on.
Okay, great. Then I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to move the passage of this and the allowance of the town manager to execute.
I'll second.
Fantastic. Thanks, Rebecca. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Great. That was item 6C. We're moving on to item 6D, which is a verbal update from our town manager. Regarding COVID-19 and the current fiscal impacts on the town, and also an update on our communications plan. Todd, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. And I just have a question for our town attorney. Teresa, am I allowed under my town, town manager report? Just to give a town manager report on anything else that is not outlined on one and two on the 6D?
I am looking at what we have. You can certainly give a very brief update on items not specifically listed. But in terms of what is listed.
And the update I wanted to give was just on the, 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 the current order, some of the changes that have been made recently by our county health official. I just wanted to give a quick, brief update of what that is. Would that be appropriate, or should I do that at the next meeting or by memo?
I think it's covered under a COVID-19. And then your first item is COVID-19 and the current fiscal impacts. I think you can update with regard to the status of the shelter in place.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So real quickly, under the, the fiscal impact. I don't have any updates tonight. What I'll tell you is that tomorrow we'll get, you know, the close of the sales tax revenues. We'll receive, we'll receive our, our revenues from the last quarter, ending in March, in March. And so that'll be a really telling sign for us tomorrow, at the end of that quarter, even though the COVID-19 started, you know, the last two weeks of March. That'll tell us how many small businesses are actually diverting or taking the opportunity. With the, the deferment of sales tax payment. And so that'll, we'll be able to take that analysis of how many small businesses actually deferred payment. And, and start to build that into our revenue projections for the end, this current quarter, the end of the fiscal year and going into 2021. And so that's the one question, as we've talked about fiscal impacts, you know, any deferments of sales tax revenue will also be additional hits. We've, we've, we've done an estimate within our projections that we talked about at the last meeting. But this will really be the first telling sign for us. And, and we'll report to you at the following meeting of what that means in dollars and cents. You know, something that we worry about is not only the deferment, we know we'll get it at some point, and we have enough money in the bank to offset that over the next 12 months. But we worry about those small business owners that not only defer it, but go out of business and can't pay. And so those are two different issues for us. And so we'll be able to report back to you. We'll probably send, send you via our finance director a memo, which is public record, but we'll send you an update this week on what we think that means. The second one is the update on the, the change in the, in the current order. And so we talked about it at our. Our call earlier today with the mayor and the public. You had a public comment about it. And so basically what it did, and again, in the last meeting, I shared with you how impactful some of your directors have been. In the Marin Recovers movement of how we reopen. And so in Marin Recovers, on any given subject. So with, as it relates to retail, you have, you know, Adam, Adam Wolf is on that, on that board and that panel, providing information. Of, of the best way to reopen. You know, curbside pickup and reopen our retail stores. You have Ashley, who's chairing, how do we reopen our parks? You have Chief Norton, who is involved in, in, in the big picture of how we reopen our parks and how we enforce the order. And so you, you have, again, Adam is involved in how do we reopen retail? I'm not, I'm sorry, not retail. How do we open our restaurants? And how do we open, you know, the outdoor, you know, facilities for, for the restaurants? And so there's a lot of moving parts, but your directors have a big, have a lot of input in that. And so one of the major changes with this order that's been really helpful is curbside pickup. And so our open-air shopping centers are, are included in that. And so they're, they're actually able to reopen. They're kind of being treated like a business district, like we talked about before. Monty Stevens, our general manager of the Corder Madera Town Center, was involved in the Marin Recovers group. To provide feedback to them on why and how we can reopen safely. And so that's happened effective Monday. And so that's a big change for us. Your staff is working closely with all the business owners. On how they can open safely and supporting them through this process. A lot of, a lot of changes will happen organically. And we just have to be, as a staff, prepared to help those business owners do things safely. And so not find a way to say no, but find a way to say yes and help them. And so that's going on right now. The other major change is parking. As you'll recall, a few months, a few weeks ago. Within the town, at the request of the county health officer. We closed the parking lots to all of the parks in the county. Because what was happening as, as the weather got nicer, we had a couple really bad weekends. Where, where residents were coming into the county from outside the county and causing huge problems within our recreational areas within Marin County. And so we closed parking. And so the parks were still open. And the thought was to be open to our residents. Our residents could walk to our parks and walk through our parks. The order now allows for parking to reopen. And so now our residents can now drive to the parks. They can park in the parking lot. You know, tennis courts are open, but our facilities are still closed. But residents can walk through the park and enjoy the park. We just don't want people to congregate. We want people to be safe. As we move forward between now and June, you'll start to see, as we evaluate this at the county level, not the town level. The town is involved in this conversation of providing our expertise, what we see for Corder Madera being Corder Madera's voice. But ultimately, it's the county health official, right? We're arming the county health official to make thoughtful decisions moving forward on this order. And so that's what we're doing. I can see our basketball courts opening soon. You know, at some point, you'll start to see benches and tables opening up over the next few weeks. And so that's going to happen. The one change that we haven't opened on parking, and you heard it in public comment, were two things. One is the top of Summit. It is still closed. Parking is closed there because it's a tight space. The county has asked us to keep that closed. It's also been at the recommendation of Central Marin Police Authority. And so we're keeping parking closed at the top of Summit. For, for Mount Tamalpais. And we're also keeping parking closed, as are our partners on Tiburon, for Ring Mountain along Paradise Drive. And so it's still open for our residents. We didn't close Ring Mountain and the trails. We closed parking along Ring Mountain. And again, that happened a few weeks ago when we had an inundation over a weekend, nice weather and wet, nice weather's headed our way. Where people from outside our community came in and like overtook the trails where you couldn't save distance. And so those trails are still open, but our, our, our goal is to keep people from the outside inundating our trails right now. So we've closed parking. And so you heard a community member that was frustrated about the lack of parking. We're continuing to evaluate it on a daily basis, working with our partners in the county, Tiburon and Central Marin Police Authority. If, if this looks like it's going to, let's just say, as we forecast out, based on the numbers, let's say the county health official says, hey, this is. We're going to probably have to keep this parking closed for the next 30 to 45 days. What we'll consider, and we're already talking about that, we would open a permitting process for those that want to use parking and allow residents only to park along Paradise Drive. And so that's something we're evaluating right now. But there's nothing that stops a resident from parking in, in Mariner Cove. And using our safe routes, our, our path to walk up to Ring Mountain. And so it is open, but that's kind of like the discussion we're having right now as a staff. Corder Madera is not being more conservative than the county. We're following the county's direction based on what they're telling us and what we're sharing with them. And again, we've heard some public comment. And again, it's just, and I'll stop because we're getting close to out of bounds, but COVID-19. We can't, the county, you have the state mandate. The governor has set the mandate of what the restrictions are. we can't, the county, you have the state mandate, the governor has set the mandate of what the restrictions are. So the county health official can only go to what the governor says we can do. We can't, we can't go past that. As you know, the six Bay Area counties had more restrictive orders a month ago or up until last week than the governor. We've kind of mirrored now the state and we can't do more than the state. We have to do exactly what they ask of us. And so that's where we're at right now, but there's a lot of discussions. As you know, things change daily. And unfortunately, it seems like orders come out on Friday. And so we're, we're playing catch up, but we, we have a big voice in this conversation. So I just, again, the council knows this, but I want the community to fully understand that our staff and all of our expertise at the manager level, at all of our director levels, we have taken an active role and leadership role on all these teams as Marin recovers works forward to reopen. And that's been at the direction of the council. The council's like, we want you to have a voice and get involved. And so that's exactly what your staff has done. And so with that, I'm, I'm done with my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, okay. So just to clarify, that was a report on the, on like the evolution of the stay at home orders. And then did you, were you, did you want to come back later and touch on the, the communications plan and?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I can actually do that too. And Mr. Mayor, please jump in there if you would like. So again, the communication plan is a priority of the council from our retreat in February. Your town manager, assistant manager and mayor met with Jen Reedy today. We had a great conversation. We are entering an agreement. The agreement is approximately forty-four, I'm sorry, $4,200 to provide various services of really evaluating all of our communication and then providing us recommendations moving forward. It'll consist of a survey, a lot of interviews and evaluating all of our systems. And so that is moving forward. And so that process will probably take anywhere from, you know, four to six to eight weeks, but we'll continue to be involved in that and provide updates to the council. But we are not waiting for that report to make any changes, you know, and that, think about the communications plan. That is everything we do. So it's our website, it's how we communicate, it's everything. Something again that we started last week, and this is the second week of it, we continue with the mayor kind of meeting with the, with the community on a, on a weekly basis and we bring in staff as needed. And so the first week was just me and the mayor. This week we added, you know, RJ Suko, our public works director who talked about projects. You know, next week we'll probably add, you know, Parks and Rec to that conversation, Ashley, and then Adam from a planning and building perspective. And so every week it'll be a new theme. But it's again, it's community engagement. It's, it's like, I referenced it as like coffee with the cops, you know, or coffee with the mayor. You can come visit us virtually and spend an hour with us. And it's been really neat. Between the two weeks, we've seen a different group of 15 to 20 residents, you know, joining us and different questions. And so I'm embarrassed to say we've never done this before, but it's been really successful. So from the communications plan will continue to evolve. And so I'm working closely with the mayor on that. And so we'll continue to report out as we move forward. And Mr. Mayor, if there's anything else you want to add with that?
That was fantastic. Do we have questions from the council for Todd? David?
It, it sounds as though that at least the initial consulting number on communications plan is smaller than estimate that we've had when we said, go ahead. Is that right?
That, that's correct. We luckily received a hometown discount from a Corder Medera resident.
And I listened in on the, I thought excellent communication style, new, new style of the call, the virtual call this morning, just to see how it all went. I thought it went very well. And one of the questions is one that I'm hoping we're following up on and pressing down on a solution, which is when are we going to take the, I would call them the orange capture nets from the benches, the public benches. I, I just think those are, I think they are sort of themselves a little bit of a hazard. And I have seen a couple of people sitting on them, which makes me nervous for a couple of different reasons. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that that's something that we can move, move away from and move beyond one way or another.
Hear you loud and clear. We'll work on it.
Okay. Thanks, David. Question from Charles and then Fred.
Yeah, so Todd, I just had a question for you. So my understanding about the Mount Tam parking, is that part of the watershed? Because I read an article in the Marin IJ, I think yesterday, that the watershed hasn't opened their parking as well. And I think in a lot of decisions that I personally have made, it's trying to stay aligned with our local authorities adjacent to us, right? And the watershed is one of them as far as trying to align policies, you know, as far as policing and other things, right? So if you, if you could, do you know if that, like, technically, I mean, we own the parking spots, but where they're accessing is it's still that? And so therefore by staying in alignment with that, we're not creating a schism with larger operations?
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. You're absolutely right. And so thank you for correcting me and clarifying that. Exactly how you explained it is exactly accurate in the fact. So specific to Mount Tamalpais, it's the watershed. It's not open. And so even though parking's in our jurisdiction, we don't have a right to, you know, allow people access to the watershed. And so, yes, that's correct. Ring Mountain is a different animal altogether. So we do have a little bit of flexibility, right? We can keep it open because it's open. But the, the recommendation of the county health official, the police department, Tiburon and ourselves, from what we've seen is to try to keep it open to our residents and both Tiburon and Corder Medera, but try to limit it from the outside, from being, becoming unusable. Because what happens is if we saw that one weekend, if that continues for a period of days, the county health official will shut down Ring Mountain. And we don't want that to happen. And so that's really what we're trying to do.
Great. Thanks, Charles. Fred?
Yeah, I know we're under the emergency, state of emergency. And I know Todd, you've been granted, I want to say special emergency powers. As a council, do you know if we need to reaffirm that state of emergency at some point in time? Or again, I know we're probably in the middle of this pandemic situation. Do you see a point of time where those emergency powers, we won't need to have that in place? And that's without jeopardizing any type of federal, state or local type funding or grants?
A great question. And under this, this discussion item, I think it's, it's appropriate, Teresa, to answer it and Teresa to jump in if I'm wrong. But Teresa and I just had this conversation. And so we're going to follow the county as they have their emergency operation center activated. I believe, Teresa, please correct me if I'm wrong, it has to be reaffirmed by the council at least two months after enacting it. And so we're still within that period. And again, you also have, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Generally, under state law, declaration of a local emergency has to be enacted every 60 days. Otherwise it dies on its own. But the governor suspended that rule with this, with respect to this particular emergency. And so the local emergency will go on until you affirmatively act to end it.
And so we also have, and something of, as we consider, we also have state and federal funding at stake as we have this declaration. And so we want to be thoughtful in how we evaluate that. And something else under the COVID-19 response that I want to clarify with the council. We talked about a process of which where I have the authority to make expenditures and decisions outside my normal authority. And any of those decisions that I've made, you know, I've shared with the council that I'd bring back to you to, to let you know what those decisions were and why I made them. So there's a public record. I really haven't had to make any decisions outside of our budget or my authority, my normal authority. I've been able to take my time and bring, you know, those types of items to the council ultimately for approval. And so I just want to also clarify that for you all. And, and I think something else, one of the council member, Cassisa, we had a conversation earlier about this, of the checks and balances of your, of your manager of like, who is like oversight under a COVID-19 type of situation to me? And I just want to remind the council that that is how our governance is set up where your manager is a direct report to you. But your town attorney is also a direct report to you. We don't answer to each other. We work with each other. And we work for you. And I want you to know that through this entire process, your town attorney has been very available and hands-on with your, with any decision-making of your town manager. She's, she's been there and I've been able to, you know, ask her questions and make sure I'm following the processes that I should be at the town manager. I've never done such a declaration before. And so she's been a great resource for me through this process. So I want you to know that is in place as well.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Fred. Any other questions from the council for Todd? If not, then we will open public comment on Todd's report.
Thank you. I will give the public a moment to raise their hands if they have any questions while I check emails. I'm not seeing any emails.
All righty.
And there are no raised hands.
All right. Thanks. Then we will close public comment and bring it back to council for comments. Any other comments from council members on this item? Looks like not all I have to say is fantastic work. Todd, you and your staff are doing a great job and I think we're all really appreciative. So thank you for being so on top of this, so responsive and great work.
Thank you.
All right. So that is item sixty. That was the verbal update from the town manager. That brings us to item seven, town manager and council reports. Todd, do you have anything else to report?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, great. Council member reports. Fred, do you want to start yourself?
Uh, yeah. I've attended, it's a weekly meeting. It's the MCC MC Economic Recovery Committee, which meets every Friday at three o'clock. And Todd mentioned this before, kind of like everything's being run through at a county level. This committee consists of members from all the towns and all the cities in Marin. Council members, mayors, vice mayor, Mayor Beckman's on there and a couple of town managers. Basically, the purpose is to get together, kind of see what's going on with the, with the individual towns and see if there's anything collectively we need to bring up to the county. Along with that, there may be some cities that are doing, have already done legwork with respect to policy and or code items that other towns can leverage off of. So again, that, that's a weekly meeting. I also attended the sales tax oversight committee. I want to keep calling it the override committee, but it's the oversight committee. Todd's laughing, which was last week. And then last night I also attended the Park and Rec Commission meeting. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Fred. Charles, anything to report? All righty, Bob.
Yeah, a couple of things. I attended the Ross Valley Paramedic Association meeting. Couple of interesting things from Chief Weber. They have been testing 20 to 40 firefighters a day for COVID-19 and none have tested positive so far. So they were happy about that. Just from an operational standpoint, something that's causing some issues is every time they use an ambulance, they have to be contaminated afterwards. And that is a two to three hour process after every ambulance. So that is slowing them down and tying up some of the ambulance usage, but they're working their way through it. We had a meeting in the Central Marin Police Council. We approved a new budget. And we are keeping our contribution the same for this year as it was for last year. We're going to tap into some reserve funds to keep that, make that happen for all three towns. We were able to keep it the same as it was for last. We know all the towns are in tough budget shape. Central Marin Fire, a lot going on there. First, Chief Scherz is going to retire. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that soon. But Ruben Martin is going to be moving up and taking over as the fire chief or fire marshal. So exciting move for Ruben and excited to see him move up there. I've worked with him closely over the past few years and we're going to miss Scott terribly. We're closely with him also, but Ruben will be fantastic. More good news, we approved hiring a hazard mitigation specialist. And we are doing this because we're going to be getting a lot of funds from Measure C for wildfire manager. It's going to be over $700,000 a year coming from them. 321,000 of that is for Corder Medera. The rest is for Larkspur. But I believe we're going to be hiring Todd Lando, who is the fire and fire safe Marin Council Coordinator. So we're going to have a team of Ruben and Todd Lando for wildfire management, which I think is just terrific for us and a really great thing for Corder Medera and Larkspur. We also approved a new budget for 2020. Our contribution is actually down slightly. Basically the same as last year though. And what else? I think that was it. Oh, and oh, I was elected chairman of the fire council for the next year. And, but yeah, that's it. But we're in good shape. There's a lot of really good smart stuff that's going to be happening in wild, in wildfire management for Corder Medera and Larkspur for Central Marin Fire. I'm really excited. We've been working on it for a while and it's gonna, this is going to be a big year. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. David, anything to report?
Couple of things. First of all, the we all passed the resolution to set aside the Marin Telecommunication, telecommunications agency. They're in their last month collecting roughly $50,000 that's coming to Corder Medera in franchise fees. And that function will be handled in the future by the MGSA and Todd will be the one reporting on that. Mr. Mayor and I co-led a, a second meeting of the Climate Action Committee. We didn't have all 15 volunteers, but we had a majority. That was a spirited discussion and a lot of progress made on the, I think, the excellent redraft work that's been accomplished by our planning staff together with consultant Christina Rourke on the revision of the 2016 Climate Action Plan and bringing the numbers up to 2018 and some of the policies forward. I think we've got a path, a path forwards with, seeing some interesting work coming out of that group. Look forward to reporting on that in the future. I was sworn in as a member of the Board of MCE Clean Energy and Mr. Mayor was sworn in as an alternate. And we're going to have the next meeting on Thursday evening.
Awesome. Thank you. I have a few items myself.
I'm sorry, there's one more. There's, I apologize. This is the special financial advisory committee to the Larkspur Corder Medera School District. And we've had a couple of meetings now, three, and the pain I reported last time is, looked like it was about $850,000 short range and more long range. Well, it looks now as though the short range pain is close to a million dollars shortfall. And as you may have seen in the news, the governor did an update of, of the statewide budget and had to make significant reductions across the board, including to all of the schools. And so there is going to be, if you will, a structural shortfall that we're all going to have to deal with going forward. And that will be more wonderful news coming forward. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, David. So I attended the police and fire councils with Bob. Bob, thanks for that great report. I chaired, as David said, the Climate Action Committee meeting with him. Climate Action Committee is, is working on, working with staff to get a new draft of the updated climate action plan to council. I participated in the weekly MCC MC Economic Recovery Committee with Fred. We're working in concert with the Marin Managers Association. And just kind of, it's, you know, a weekly checking group, as Fred said, to try and share best practices and ideas on what public agencies can do to help the local economy sort of rebound from this. Todd mentioned our weekly chats that we're doing. This was a brilliant idea of Todd's that we, we had our first one last Tuesday. So it's going to be a weekly thing Tuesdays at 11:00. Basically like a, almost like a call-in radio show where residents can just tune in and ask questions to myself, Todd and key staff. And I think it's been a really successful outreach tool. We've had about 20 people on the line both times, which I think, you know, any council member will tell you is more than we usually get at a council meeting. And what's more exciting is that I think these are a lot of times residents that have not interacted with us before. So I think we're really being successful and kind of pushing past, you know, we're, we're reaching people who are not already tuned into what's going on at the town. And I think that's our challenge. That's our goal. And so to be seeing some, you know, some traction there is really exciting. The last thing I'll just report is I attended a CMSA meeting last week. Nothing too exciting there, nothing that really pertains to Corder Medera directly, but the agency is in good shape. That is the end of my report. That concludes item seven and brings us to item eight, which is review of the draft agenda for next, for I guess the June meeting that is being moved to June 9th. Are there any questions from council on that item?
And Mr. Mayor, I have a comment when you're ready for me.
Sure, go ahead.
So we've been a little bit delayed because it's, it's hard to. So again, we've been a little bit delayed because it's, it's hard to, to develop a work plan when you can't spend a day with your staff after our council retreat. But I am meeting individually with all of my directors. And with the change in the data, the next meeting, I believe that I can add, I'll work through the mayor on this to make sure it's ready to go. But I believe I can add that to the agenda for council review. So our upcoming work plan will be on this agenda as well.
Fantastic, if you can swing it, we would love to see that. All right, great. All right, any other comments on this item? If not, then we are adjourned.
Happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Bob. Happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thanks Eli.
All right, good night, everyone.
Happy birthday, bye-bye.